Welcoming you on this rainy afternoon. Amherst is beautiful regardless of the weather, but it's a pity that it has to be regardless of the weather today. My name is Paula Rousch and I'm one of the members of the Board of Trustees. I am just about to rotate off of the Board after 12 years. And I wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about what the Board does. It's as important what we don't do as what we do do. But we are really the stewards of the institution that each of us loves. I would say this is the best unpaid job I've ever had. And our Board is an unusual Board for the people that serve on many Boards, the Amherst Board and others. Very often they will say this is by far the best Board that they have ever served on. There is a shared passion about the College. I don't believe any of you would be back here if you didn't share that, that passion with us. And it's a diverse group of people with very different skills. And we are called upon to undertake a variety of special projects as well as the work of the Board. And it's kind of the basics. We need to engage fully in the mission of the College to support the values of the College. Part of it is to show up and be prepared. When I spoke with G-Day, who was the Chair of the Board, the second Chair of the Board during the time that I've been on the Board, he had been on the Board before he rotated off for 18 years and let me know that he had only missed one Board meeting. So I feel compelled now to say to you, after 12 years on the Board, I have only missed one Board meeting. And part of what we need to do is really to understand the difference between oversight and management, to be sure that what we're doing is oversight, but not getting lost in the weeds and actually damaging the College by trying to micromanage it. The Board is engaged in oversight. The administration is involved in management. Hopefully, you will share your thoughts with us at the end of what I hope will be an interesting hour. And what I am going to ask my fellow Board members to do, we are, we have one Board member who headed back to Boston because he was on call for the weekend and was worried about the traffic, and another who was caught in traffic on her way here. So we may get joined by another Board member. But I'm going to ask my colleagues to my left to introduce themselves, to tell us, I hope, a little bit about, about what their day jobs are. A couple of things about what they did when they were Amherst students. We're all here for our reunion, so I guess you have to declare your reunion year. I'm a '77. When they joined the Board, some of the committees that each of us serve on, and why anyone would choose to make this commitment. So Dwight, you're first up.
Good. I'm Dwight Pollard, class of '87. I am in my second year on the Board. When I left Amherst, I went off to, as a History and International Relations major, I immediately went into almost 30 years of Finance, as a good liberal arts grad does, shifting gears. Went off to New York, Tokyo, Boston, and then have been based in London the last eight years in my 24th year with Bain Capital doing private equity. So that's my day job and where I live. I've got three children. One is a sophomore here. My second is a sophomore here, so I get a bit of exposure to student life right now. My activities at Amherst, I did JV soccer, glee club. I was in the, the, our '87 is those of you who are here would know, that was the last year of the fraternities, so I got to experience the shift from having to not having fraternities, which is a bit akin to what's gone on with the change in the social dorms now. And my roles on the, on the Board, I'm on the Finance and Budget Committee, the Development Committee, and the Instruction Committee. And I guess for just a minute on why I wanted to join the Board, obviously, the place has always been incredibly important to me, but it was actually at one of these sessions exactly, it must have been five years ago, I don't think it was 10 years ago, when someone started asking the question of, you know, how does the math work with how, you know, tuition is rising, endowment returns in a tough market are falling? I guess it really was 10 years ago, because it was right after the crisis. How scholarships rising and such, how does all that math work in this College? And that, that question intrigued me a whole lot and has been something that I've been, was interested in before joining the Board, and it's been a fascinating education to be involved now and to work with an extraordinary finance team at the College in place now that, that works through that issue to great effect. So that's been my, my real focus on coming out of the Board.
I'm John Middleton. I'm the class of '77 with Paula. I've been on the Board eight years. I Chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. I'm on the Budget and Finance. I'm on the Advancement Committee. I'm on Trusteeship Committee. I'm missing one. I shouldn't miss it, but I am. So when I was here, I was, I was a wrestler. People kind of think sometimes that they're the admission mistake. Well, turns out that Boards make admissions mistakes too, so I have the distinction of being both an admission mistake to get here and an admission mistake to be on the Board. But they haven't caught on quite yet, so I'm hoping to escape after another four years. I think the reason why I, I joined the Board is I'm, as a businessman, I went, I went from here to Harvard Business School and then I spent 30 years, nearly 30 years, building up a company before I sold it. So I'm semi-retired. In my semi-retirement, I am also the managing partner of the Philadelphia Phillies, which is sometimes fun, but right now, not. So if there are no reporters here, I hope, don't repeat that. You know, the reason I joined is I think I'm fascinated by organizations and I'm fascinated by world-class organizations. I had the privilege of being on the Board of Penn Medicine, which oversees everything medical about the University of Pennsylvania, which is another great institution. And I, Amherst is a great institution and it's, it's been great and wants to stay great. And that's, that's a tough challenge. Staying great over time is very difficult. It takes enormous commitment, enormous effort, and it takes resources, money as well as people. And I really, the leadership that's required to lead an organization like this is really something. And I, I was, I joined the Board when Tony Marks was the President. I really liked Tony. I loved the direction he was taking the College. And I had the privilege, and it really was a privilege, I was on the Search Committee that hired Biddy. And I was also, I was part of the small group of, there were about five, four or five of us who went down to Washington for the first time. We met Biddy. And I remember walking out of that meeting with the others and I looked at them as we were getting into the elevator and I said, "Does anybody else think we just talked to the next President of Amherst College?" And they all shook their heads, nodded their heads. Biddy's great, and I think the chance to work with leaders like Biddy is a rare opportunity in life. And I love working with her. I love supporting her. I love the way she challenges us and I love the way she allows us to challenge her. It's been a great learning and experience for me intellectually and I just, I'm, it's a privilege to be here. I'm very grateful.
Hi. I'm Pat Fitzgerald from the class of 1982, and I've been on the Board four years. I chair the Human Resources Committee. It's a little bit like going to college again when you're on the Board, except you're not allowed to cut class at all, which is tough. It's pretty exhausting to be on the Board, to be honest. People are very, very deep thinkers and those of us who are not can get very, very tired quickly.
I feel your pain.
Yeah. And I look out, I see Michelle Deitch, my classmate who was on the Board, and she and I didn't know each other, but we visited and stayed in Morrow when we were high school seniors. There was three of us, my good friend John Goggins and Michelle's on the Board. And someone had told me that night, Michelle would be on the Board, I would believe it. If they told me I'd be on the Board, I'd say, "Oh, God, they're in trouble." The reason I joined the Board, very sincerely, is I found Amherst was a life-changing experience and I thought it was more life-changing, I realized afterward, than when I was here. My high school was a life-changing experience and my, my parents were immigrants and went to sixth grade in Ireland, both of them, and then came, came here. And then to come to Amherst and have this opportunity, which was a gift, because, you know, I didn't pay anything to go here, basically, to get that gift and then just to realize how much you learned outside the classroom. And when I was here, people always kept saying, "You'll learn more outside the classroom than you'll learn in the classroom." They always thought that was the stupidest thing ever. I'm thinking, "Wait a minute, you've got these really smart PhDs and then the other people are your age, so how would you ever learn more from them than the PhDs?" And maybe about 20 years later, it sort of sunk in and I realized you learned a lot. And I think you learned a lot from the fact that people were very different and they were very different backgrounds and you got to mix with them a bit and you learned to think and debate and do it in a very constructive way. And so it changed my life. After here, I went to law school. I practiced law briefly in the private sector. I spent 24 years as a federal prosecutor in New York and Chicago. Now I'm back in the private sector for four years in Chicago. And so when it came to time to figure out what I wanted to do, sort of the pro bono side, I thought the thing that most impacted me life-wise was education and gave me a chance that I wouldn't have had. And I thought any way I could contribute would be a great thing to do. I echo John's comments about Biddy. You know, the one thing I'd also say besides Biddy being a remarkable leader in the room is our Chair is Colin Murphy. It's sort of remarkable to have a Board chaired by someone who writes for a living. He's a very careful thinker and he can put pen to paper like nobody else, but it's not just how he writes, but how he thinks. And so it's a very, very good Board. Probably shouldn't roll grenades out there, but you know, some of the issues we've dealt with, of all the issues we dealt with, we didn't spend the greatest amount of time on the mascot issue, but I know people paid attention to it. And I thought, when you looked at how Colin wrote the letter afterward, it was really thoughtful, because on the one hand, he said, "Look, everyone writes that there are bigger issues than this, but..." And then you realize that people really got engaged in the issue. And we had a really thorough discussion behind closed doors. It was not unanimous. It was vigorous, but then people sort of closed ranks and sort of said at the end of the day, "Well, if the majority of alumni want to change the mascot, and if the overwhelming majority of the students want to change the mascot, and the overwhelming majority of the faculty want to change the mascot, and we don't even have an official mascot, then, you know, maybe we should change the mascot." And that logic made sense to me, but, but I also thought there were a substantial number of people who believed in the mascot and we wanted to do it in a way that wasn't sort of a condemnation of people saying, "Hey, if you rally around that mascot, that's fine." And we weren't going to retry someone from the 18th century in, in modern jurisprudence and figure out what exactly did he say and he caused and he do. It was sort of like, "We're going to just move on from this, but we're not going to chastise people who have loyalty to the mascot." So if you hear people singing Lord Jeff this weekend, they're not going to get arrested and thrown off campus. How about it? And so just thought that, you know, issues big and small as a group, I think we wrestle with them and we do our best and move on.
John, can you say something as Buildings and Grounds about the amazing amount of construction that's been going on and is going on on the campus?
How far back do you want me to go? So I, for those of you who haven't been here for a while, the campus looks quite different. I was talking, I had a 1:00 presentation with Tom Davies from the Buildings and Grounds Office on this Greenway Projects, and somebody came up to me afterwards and he said, "I hadn't been on this campus in 15 years." And he said, "I can't believe how different it is." This is a college, I mean, this is, when I talked about a commitment to excellence and being great, you need great facilities. And, and this is a college that has been committed to, and it's done a remarkably good job of maintaining its facilities. The dorms, it's gone through, it's not, they're almost, almost entirely complete, not entirely, but they've gone through their dorms, they've gone, they're going through their academic buildings. Obviously, the single largest project in history, the College, is the Science Center. And it, because it's in the middle of construction, probably deserves the most focus in my comments. But it's, along with what we call the Greenway Projects, it's the Science Center, it's the Greenway itself, and then it's the four dorms. It's a $330 million project. We started working on it really hard in the summer of '13, and we're going to open up the Science Center in September of '18. And it's, it was amazing to see the group of people, because it was senior staff, it was senior administration, senior faculty pulling together, and students to kind of pull this off. So I probably don't, I'm not, so let me, try to think of a couple of things I guess I should say about it. Obviously, world-class science is important in liberal arts education. I think one of the most interesting comments to that effect is, was made to me by Shirley Tillman. Shirley is a retired President of Princeton University. And I have the great pleasure, I bring Shirley up and back from, from Princeton to this, these meetings every, every quarter. And so I get to spend a lot of time with Shirley one-on-one. And one, a number of years ago, when we were working on the beginning of this project, she said to me, "You know, John," she said, "the dividing line between great liberal arts colleges in the future is going to be their science, their science departments and the Science Center." And she said, "The reason for that is it's cost, it's so expensive to build a Science Center and to maintain a Science faculty at a world-class level." And she said, "The schools that don't have the money or don't have the commitment and don't, therefore don't make the effort and, and build these new facilities are going to fall by the wayside over time." So she said, "For Amherst, if it wants to be great in 25, 50 years, it has to do this project." So I think that's an important place to start. And the other thing I would say is, you know, we've all basically gone to a school that's a great school. I mean, it's a, been a world-class, Amherst has been a world-class school for a long, long time. But people don't, too many people don't remember that it wasn't always the Amherst today. If you go back in time, it was a lot less than that. It was a regional, New England regional college. And it was really starting in, in the 30s with Stanley King, who kind of created a vision for Amherst, actually went out and retained Charlie Cole, who's a graduate, to chair a long-term strategic planning committee that set the course for Amherst to become what it is. World War II intervened, they shelved the strategic plan. After World War II, Stanley pulled it off and looked at the trustees and said, "Guys, I'm not going to be around to," you know, it's like a 10-year plan, "I'm not going to be here to implement it from the beginning to the end. I think you need to go out and hire a new President." And they all turned to Charlie Cole. And Charlie implemented the plan that he wrote under Stanley's direction. And that's really was the transition from Amherst in the 30s and the 40s and the 50s into the 60s and continuing into a spectacularly great school. But the importance of that is, as Shirley's comment reinforces, you don't stay there without commitment and dedication and effort. And so I think this is such a great, great project and it, and I don't know what else I could say about it. I think it reflects the integration of sciences. For those of you who are scientists, you understand how different sciences is practiced today than it was 20, 30 years ago. The bio, you know, the departments are all kind of scrambled, you know, they're on different floors, they're on different wings, they have different adjacencies to each other than they did 50 years ago. And it's, it's, I think when we're finished, we're going to have the greatest, the best Science Center of any liberal arts college in the country. So I think it's something we're all going to be very, very proud of.
Paula, could I add something to that?
I sit on a different educational Board, a public Board, and it's great, but at the end of it, there's a procurement package that people voice vote on and has all this, you know, revise this lab, fix this lab, put this building up. A lot of money gets spent with like a voice vote. I don't think people appreciate when, when John says he's involved in these projects. Like before they built this Science Project, the people from campus, the administrative people who were really on top of this, faculty, students, and John visited half a dozen other campuses to walk through, tour, get feedback, figure out what's going on. The amount of time and effort particularly John puts in from the Board is remarkable. So when he says he's sort of in semi-retirement and runs the Philadelphia Phillies, I think he has two jobs. And, but it does show you the level of commitment people have, which is sort of like, it's not just, "Okay, we should have a Science Center, let us know what happens in a few years." It's briefed every meeting and usually ends with on time and on budget, so it's quite the effort.
Thank you.
Dwight, do you want to take us on a tour of Amherst finances?
Sure. You know, I think those of you that are involved in, in education today in any way know education's expensive, whether you're a parent paying for it or on the Board and trying to manage it. And I, I think much of, you know, what the, the administration does here and we try to support on the Board side is managing three sides of the triangle, which are budget management, making sure that spend is, is managed in a way that we get the best possible education and truly the best in, in the United States internationally. Two is that we invest our endowment, which we're fortunate, I'll come back to that in the third piece of it, to have a really strong endowment. But we need to manage in ever more complex markets and how to make money from the endowment, because that's a key part of our income stream. And then third is in development. And we are blessed with an extraordinarily generous alumni base that has contributed over time to build a really, you know, powerful endowment. And we, we rank up there in endowment per student, right at the very top decile of, of schools, whether universities or, or colleges. But the real, the challenge is managing those, those points of the triangle. And I think where Amherst has, has gone and done something very different from many schools is to go forward and, and be the, the school of the future, not just in academic rigor and strength, but in diversity. And not just diversity of ethnicity, but socioeconomic diversity, regional diversity, situational diversity. And that has, that has been a journey that, you know, we're all very excited about. And, you know, John mentioned, you know, Tony and G-Day really getting us off on a fantastic path here, which I was extremely supportive of. And, and the beginning of this raised the challenge and it puts pressure on all three points of those triangles, because people come from different backgrounds and it costs a bit more to get everybody into the same place on the learning side. We've been able to embrace with the, the generational transition of our faculty, a fascinating new faculty base. And attracting faculty against the top colleges and universities around the country is expensive. So, you know, that has, that has cost to it. And as those of you in the financial markets know, it's been a pretty complicated financial markets to navigate. What's been interesting, as I said, this was what drew me onto the Board, because I saw it as a really interesting challenge to get at. And to arrive and find Kevin Wyman, our CFO here, who is just extraordinary. These, the, the finance team is as good here as in any of our private equity portfolio companies, which gives me fantastic comfort. Our Investment Committee is led by, you know, an extraordinary talent with Amos Hostetter and Peter Nodosi, both, you know, 80 or above with experience that is extraordinary and puts us at, at the, the top ranks of investing. And as I said, the, the endowment has gone very well. But keeping those in place is a real challenge. And so the, the tension between ever better programs to make sure that the school is at the top while balancing the finances is, is something that we really try to work with the administration to support on all three fronts. I'm sure people have, have questions on that, but it's been absolutely fascinating to be on the inside. And if it was worrying to watch from the outside, being on the inside and seeing the, the debate that actually happens, the talent that comes to bear here, has been incredibly gratifying to be part of.
So I want to tell you a little bit also about myself and my day job and then talk a little bit about our Amherst students, which are an amazing group of young people. So my day job is I'm a child psychiatrist at Mass General. I transferred into Amherst with the first group of women. I see some others in the, the audience who were in those early days because of when I came to Amherst. I'm Amherst's first female physician, which is kind of fun. I run a program at the Mass General, helping parents who have life-threatening illness to think about the well-being of their children in the context of what is usually a shortened life. During my Amherst days, I was not an athlete. I am still not an athlete. So I feel like this is my varsity team sport, being on a member of the Board of Trustees. It is a varsity-level team, indeed. I was a dorm advisor and I met at that time with many alumni groups that were very opposed to co-education. I can remember meeting with members of the Beta Society and having one of them stand up and say, "How does it feel to have ruined Amherst College?" One of, with the confidence of being 19, I was, I assured him that I didn't think that our group of women and all the women now who have come after us were ruining the College. And a member of the class of '78 said, "Each of you in this room," referring to then the alumni who were substantially older than us, I realize probably younger than me now, but they seemed really old at the time, "As far as I can tell, each one of you relies on Amherst as a place of excellence. And if you are not willing to draw from 50% of the population in who you choose, you can guarantee that 25 years from now, you would have allowed Amherst to fall farther and farther behind and it wouldn't be the place that you wanted it to be." That was the beginning of his illustrious career in advertising, truly. And I felt at that time supported by my fellow classmates, by the then-President of the College. And for me, coming back in all seriousness, though I too joke about how did I end up here, and in fact, at our last reunion, someone said to me, "Boy, aren't you surprised that of all of us, you're the one that's on the Board of Trustees?" And I said, "Yeah, nobody's more surprised than me." And then the child psychiatrist in me thought, "But do you have a frontal lobe?" Because you might have kept that one to your, to yourself. Not really. My, my greatest joy being at Amherst on the, on the Board is really the students. Every time we have a chance to meet with the students, they're just extraordinary. They are excited, they are interested, they are interesting. I have had the enormous pleasure of having two of our sons attend Amherst. And each of them grew in wonderful ways. Scott Turo, who had, was on the Board when I joined, described Amherst as the place where you become yourself. And whilst I had little perspective, when I was a student, that I was becoming myself, I had the great privilege to watch my children become themselves. And that is really an amazing thing. For me, there are many aspects of student life that are interesting and important. Because Amherst is as selective and continues to be more and more selective, I think many of us think all the time we would never have gotten into Amherst if we had to apply now, because it's probably true. But when you choose from such extraordinary kids from so many different places, it makes one take pause about what will and won't allow them to succeed in the way that we would wish for them. And, you know, when you think about what gets in the way of success, emotional well-being, time management, substance use, there are a number of mental health and emotional well-being issues that actually interfere with people becoming themselves that they might best become. And again, I would echo my colleagues here in saying that when you are sitting here and talking with the administration, with the faculty, with the students, the extraordinary care that goes into this stewardship for every child that comes in, every young adult who comes in to Amherst College, the care that goes into hoping to help them to become the best young adult and ultimately, you know, citizen of the world is extraordinary. And I, if I could, with my magic wand, offer something to you, it would be to allow everyone to be a fly on the wall, to actually hear these discussions and to actually get an up-close view of how much care goes into this. And I think before I was on the Board, and as I've listened to some of the comments from the alumni body, I think it may not always be apparent, the deep thought that goes into the process, so that people tend to get the headlines, because that's, that's what's available. But I would really wish that you could hear how deeply and carefully around literally every student, the, the conversations unfold. And anyone have another comment, other thoughts? Want to talk?
I have no thoughts.
All right. Okay. So, so then with, we're going to stop about five to 10 minutes before 5:00, so that people that want to go to the Powerhouse for the reception there can make their way in the rain. Maybe, maybe the rain has stopped. And so we open it up to your questions.
I was going to ask this partner, Jack McKenna, class of '52. Why don't you open up your pingsy pingsy, if you want us to know? That's not what I was asking, but that's a good question. I wrote to this board several times and didn't get a response. It's a good question I had about the Board here. I'm not unreconstructed, not, oh, God, I'm not unreconstructed. But I asked, but how many here disagree with Senator Nambus with Colin Murphy's statement? And I'll give James a careful statement that it's clear what Lord Jeff fought and said. But as to what he did, it's not clear. Does, does, does anyone disagree with that? And I'll tell you why I asked him. It is clear, it's not unclear what he didn't do. He didn't do it. There's evidence, it's much, much more to check. There's evidence, it's like, like, we have the science, we have. Do you, what, or did you agree with that, that the statement or not?
I'll take a crack at it. I don't remember exactly what he said about that. And I won't want to talk about what other people on the board said, but I'll tell you what I think. It was pretty clear that he made statements indicating that it would generally be a good thing if someone were to give blankets infected with smallpox or measles, whatever it was, to Native Americans. And we can debate the context in which it happened. I know people sent us in a lot of emails, talking about the, the savagery that was going on, on both sides of that war. Right. But, right. And, but whether people acted upon it or not, people can disagree because there's a historical debate. And we have enough trouble trying to figure out what happened in situations in 2017, what happened a week ago, to go back a couple hundred years and figure out whether or not people were actually killed as a result. But if he said that, we, we could have a very significant debate about how much you have to forgive what people did when things change over time. But our whole point was if 85% of the student body feel like having that person as an unofficial mascot was dividing us, and most of the faculty felt that, and 52% of the alumni felt that. And when I say that, it's not a 52-48 issue, it was a 52% were against the mascot, 38% were in favor, and there was a gap of people who said, "I really don't care." It just seemed like, why do we associate ourselves with something that's dividing us? If we separate ourselves from that mascot and let people who support the mascot have their views, that made sense. So I don't think we thought we could solve exactly what happened 200 years ago.
So nobody disagreed with that statement?
I, I don't.
I don't think that's what he said. I don't think that's what, what he said.
Yeah, it sounds like this is, that this is something he wants to talk with one of us.
Yeah. Let me also say, I think one of the, the interesting questions a person has to ask him or herself when you join a group like this board is, what exactly do you represent? And what does your vote represent? I think one of the most courageous political acts in this country was when Sam Houston, who was a Southerner, voted against secession in the US Senate. And he said, he put, he says, if you read his biography, he said at the time, he said, "I know who elected me. I know what the, what people, citizens of my state want." But he said, "When I join the US Senate, I'm not just a senator from a certain state. I'm representing, in a sense, the entire United States." So whatever I thought about Lord Jeff or whatever I thought about the claims, the issue that I came to, when I, when I had to think about this was, what's in the best interest of Amherst College? And I can't, you know, that's a different question to answer than what do I think personally? And I voted for what I thought was in the best interest of Amherst College.
One is what happened, the other is your question.
Right. And I think, and I think ultimately, be, be honest with you, I don't think the first question, hundreds of years later, really matters. The problem is, Pat says, if you have 85% of your, your students feeling one way, you have your faculty feeling another way, the same way, rather. At some point, you just have to kind of say, what, what, what am I doing up here as a trustee? I'm charged with the institution's care. And that's ultimately, I think, the standard and the benchmark that you have to make your.
Is that what the student body of the sex of the jury?
Well, you can agree to disagree. Are there other questions? Andy?
So I wanted to comment about something that I, so by accident, I've been fairly involved in students in Amherst. So my wife and I, both our daughters live in Amherst. My youngest daughter were Williamsburg for two months before she said that. I'm just kidding, I don't really know anything about Amherst. But anyway, so what happened, when my oldest daughter was here, so, yeah. Anyway, I was walking around and I'm, so I ended up doing a medical research, a position I do, a research, I'm walking around, I got no friends. And one guy asked, "What are you doing?" I don't know, I'm going to be a technician for a couple of years. Because what happens now, unlike when we went to college, many, many kids take a year, a couple of years off. So I ended up hiring them, working on that. And I'm now among six consecutive Amherst students. So I come back to Paramount, I love the science people. I wasn't a very good basketball player, but I knew the coach, so I know a lot of students. But one of the things, very true, that Jeff asked me the other night, but anyway, the thing that I've noticed is when I came back a couple of weeks ago to interview students, so the kind of research I do is so different than what's at Amherst. So the reality, Amherst only do a more basic level of research, they can't do kind of the, it's a college, not a university, so they work on microorganisms, there's a lot of what's called slime mold, which is red mold. And so as I interviewed them, I told them I do all this, these things, and I do this bio, and they said, "That's really cool, I have no idea that that's where the field is right." And, and so the thing that I've been thinking about is, it's quite a challenge to be a liberal arts college. And I have a friend at MIT who's a trustee candidate, and he is the same thing. And Amherst, and all these schools are very successful, but the question is, how do you bridge the gap? I think is one of the questions. Because what you get exposed to is partly what drives the future. And how can you increase that? So I had a simple thought that to think about, and I thought, what I could suggest to be considered, because obviously we don't want to be a vocational school, what makes Amherst a liberal arts, but there's all these fields, whether it be law or non-business, is that maybe there could be a senior-level seminar series, where you care a professor and an alumnus. And then each week, they bring in an alumnus in a certain area, and you have a seminar, you have dinner, and you hang out and talk. Because these, I was just so struck by these people, said, "Gee, that's really cool, I, chemistry major, I would never think that we could actually do that in this." And so I, I think that's a real challenge. But I think one of the big challenges for Amherst and for people is the future, and have you linked it? This might be a way to link alumni in whatever area, but also to gain some insight into the potential elements, how you go about doing it. I mean, I spend a lot of time with these six Amherst students, like life is life without Amherst students around. And that you know you can't expect everyone to be smart and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, I think that's just a thought to think about.
Thank you for sharing it, and we will connect, connect it with the faculty. Thanks. Yes?
Hi, Jeff Weard, 19. Quick question, a general question. How do you, do you use guiding principles to ensure that you're a Board of Oversight versus a Board of Management? Because oftentimes, just in general, there is that tension sometimes between Board and Management. So are there guiding principles that you use? And, and how do you reduce or avoid, or even eliminate that kind of tension?
You know, just in the perfect world, I sit on a lot of boards. And I think the, you know, the guiding principle that we use, which is a very, very simple one here, is noses in, fingers out. And it's, it's a very simple way to say, it's our responsibility to know what's going on, to understand who's responsible for what, how are they doing it, et cetera, but keep our hands off the bill. And it's, it's a very simple, but I tell you, it guides all boards. I think this board does it incredibly well. And the, the challenge would be, and it's essentially all the same, you know, from different perspectives, we have an extremely capable administration here. And so when you get in and see that, and obviously it's an easy job because we deal with very complex topics and not everyone agrees all the time.
And so the, the second fundamental thing I'd say is, in managing the board, is, is having very healthy, open debate in the boardroom and speak as one voice when you leave the boardroom. And so, you know, topics like we just touched on, you know, it's a very healthy debate. And I, I always say to alums, you know, the one thing that people should not think is that when someone mentions, "Have you thought about X?" Or, "I can't believe you don't think about Y." I'll promise you, it gets thought about. It gets talked about and it gets aired very actively. And, and the dialogue is very open, so people are comfortable with healthy, healthy doses of conflict and confrontation and contention. But we do come, as John summarized well, we speak as one voice when we leave the room. And, and that, I think, fits our roles of being stewards, know what needs to get done, make sure we have the best people in place. You know, the board has really one main, one employee, which is the president of the college. And the president of the college needs to, you know, hire their team. And we're always just making sure we have the best president there. We get a lot of visibility of the rest of the team and, and be supportive sounding boards for them. And I, I say the, the structure of the board works incredibly well with our chair, our president, our board, and all the faculty that we get to see.
I would also say that because really, essentially, everybody comes to every board meeting, having read, you know, a three-ring binder that's full, and many things that occur in between. And so I think the board is small enough, the terms are long enough, that there's a culture of the board. And I, I believe that every person that comes in is, is affected by that intense culture of the nose-in and hands-out. I, I like that. Yes?
When you came onto the board, what did you consider to be the biggest challenge for Amherst? And what do you consider today to be the biggest challenge for Amherst?
I'm going to start at the other end of the table.
Go ahead. Pat? I'll tell you what I think is the biggest challenge that remains, and it reflects larger society, is how we deal with people who disagree vehemently. And I just think we live in a world in which people turn on one set of cable news channels to hear what they think repeated back to them and hear people who think like they do and go out and say, "I'm, I'm right." And they don't look at the other cable news channel on both sides of the debate. And I think it's very unhealthy if you look at the old Crossfire and you watch people don't debate, they just yell at each other. And so to live in that world, I think this, Amherst is especially important. And to try to make sure that in, in our diversity, we help have a diversity of thought. And not, not diversity of thought, having polarizing views yell at each other, but try to make sure that we bring in people who can have healthy discussions. I think one of the things we were reflecting on the last board meeting, there's been a lot of that going on quietly, but the, you know, that Jeb Bush came to campus and it came, I think it went very, very well. Rich Lowry from the National Review came to campus and went very well. So I think we want Amherst to be a place where there is not a monopoly of views, but it's not just to bring in one person to yell or be yelled at, but to have a broader diversity of thought.
I think that sums it up pretty well, don't you?
So let me take two of Pat's comments and admit them together. When, when I was on the search committee for Biddy, that found Biddy, we spent a lot of time talking to all the various constituents. And I, I was up here probably eight to 10 times, meeting with student groups. And it was astonishing how consistently the students said to, to the three or four of us on the search committee that were at these sessions, that what they really wanted was to have the school help them, have the college help them, kind of learn from each other. How to help them to kind of, and, and you know, Pat said, you know, it wasn't 20 years that he realized this, but he said how much he learned outside the classroom. These kids today are very cognizant of that. They're cognizant, they, they like the diversity, it's what attracts them here. And they're trying to figure out how they can use that diversity to their intellectual and personal advantage, you know, their personal growth. And so I think that's the biggest challenge we face, is help, is helping them. And if we, to the extent that we do that, we will also touch on Pat's most, more recent point, which is, I think, I think Amherst can be a place where people can, from very different backgrounds, very different beliefs, can learn to exist together in harmony and, and to express themselves appropriately. And I think if they do that here, they'll do that in their future adult lives and influence their communities. And lord knows, we need people, we need adults out there who can talk with each other, not at each other. So that's, I see that's our cha, I see that challenge is to help these kids. And we need to be intentional about how we can help them to get to that point in their lives.
I couldn't say it better. I've only been on two years, so I, I mentioned the financial dynamic, which was the thing that I thought was the biggest challenge. It is still something that I'd say is in the top few issues we, we will continue to manage going forward. My first board meeting was the Jeff mascot and the post-Amherst uprising, so I thought, wow, this, there's a lot going on here. And, and I thought, those are big challenges. But, you know, not that far into it, I totally agree with what Pat and John said, which is, for all the, you know, what, what I think everyone can see from the outside looks like tumult going on and is a challenge, you know, my view of it is very different. It's, it's a crucible of change going on in society. And, you know, for all these, this various forms, and I really do the broadest definition of diversity that we're going through, the most exciting thing is, I think as a recruiter, these are the people I want to recruit. And whether it's in the business, or governance, government, or academia, or anywhere, you want people that can deal with difference and embrace it and find the opportunities in it. And there's just not many of those places around today with the little micro bubbles that exist in, in internet communication. And so I think, as challenging as it may be, and I watched my daughter go through this, and there's times I've said, "Boy, you're here at a tough time." Then I say, "But it must have been really tough to be here during Vietnam, during co-education, you know, when the fraternities were moved." There's always something, you know, and so we can look and say, "God, it's so tough right now." This is just one more form of tough, and that's the way the world is. So I think it's fantastic, the crucible they're going through, and I think they're going to be all the better for it.
I think when I started on the board, I, I, number one for me was, how do we make sure that a liberal arts education, which I deeply, deeply believe in, continues to be seen as, as valuable as I believe it is, as many of us believe it is? And in a changing world, even, even more so, I think the integration of science and humanities could nev, has never been more important than it, than it is now. And I think I am rotating off the board, first feeling that, that the college is in extraordinarily good hands, but continuing to have the sense that young people coming of age at this time in the life of the world have a lot of challenges in front of them. And, and I continue to feel for them in terms of their emotional health and, and well-being. And that is not particularly about those at Amherst, but those who are 18 to 22 and older. So that's where my mind goes. I want to welcome Kim Leary, who is, was caught in traffic instead of being, being up here. Invite you up if you want to come sit with us. Come on up. Can I not only put you on the spot and ask you for some perspective on your first year on the board?
Sure. Well, I'm delighted to be here and I apologize for being caught in that traffic. You know, in joining the board and in getting to know Amherst in this new way, I would say that what's been, what stood out for the, the most for me is that we each have our own Amherst. We know the classes just ahead, just behind. But when you are a member of the board, you have a, a chance to kind of see the arc of Amherst over many, many years and generations. And the first year, at least for my first year, I, I've spent it sort of trying to listen and learn across those generations. And, you know, as my colleagues have said, I think the, the most exciting part of being on the board is also being able to see the college through the eyes of the students who are here now. The questions, the concerns, the challenges that they're facing now. We map those, I think, inevitably onto our own experience. But just as we were talking about, the, being able to tolerate difference and being able to hold different points of view also involves having a whole different Amherst in mind as we sit on the board. And to think about where Amherst in the future will be and looking at the young ones in the room and thinking about what college they will inherit. And that responsibility, I think, means that you come onto the board in a very humble position and trying to take the position of, of a learner.
Last question.
I have a comment, a question. I've been president for 22 years, worked with a lot of trustees over that time. First of all, I want to thank you. Thank you. It's Amherst trustees, meeting as often as you do, everyone showing up, it's extraordinary. It's unusual, believe me, of 3,000 plus colleges and universities in America. It's extraordinary, it's unusual. Secondly, you mentioned that most important job, and it really is the most important job for a trustee is to give to the president. And one should never forget that. Everything goes through the president, and that gets me to my other comment, which is, Amherst is, and God knows, it's a wonderful place now, in many ways it's a much more wonderful place than it was 50 years ago when I was an undergrad, and I loved it then. But presidents are sitting at the intersection of all these changes. And oftentimes, they involve visits to emergency rooms, they involve suicides, they involve horrible challenges. People have no sense of all the kinds of pressures that can come at the president. So last comment is, the board is very, very important to have the president back. Last comment is, the board is very, very important to have the president's back, to insulate the president, and to be a place that a president can't talk to everybody about this, they can't talk to faculty about things, they can't talk to students about something. And you do a board, it needs to be a, a place that the president can talk 100% confidently. So I thank you for what you're doing, President. He's a love.
And now, to the powerhouse, and you can thank the president herself.